Okay, now we're recording, so everybody watch your language. Okay. Well, it's after three, so I think we might as well sort of get officially started. Doesn't look like Susan's gonna join us today. So let me just say welcome to everybody. We've all been chatting here for a few minutes. But we're glad you all made it here today and December is the holiday madness. Begins to crank up and everybody's got weekend and midweek. Events to go to and commitments, shopping, all that good stuff. Our topic today is is kind of a loose one and at any time during the meeting, if anybody wants to talk to any about anything else. It's just sort of an open forum. I thought we'd talk a little bit about some of the things that we discussed at last Sunday's quarterly trustee meeting. And of course, that'll all be coming out down the road in newsletter articles and and emails and things like that in a more official matter. But just to give you a little heads up. One of the aspects that Susan touched on was volunteerism and getting more participation by members, and we've talked about that before. And we're going to be sending out something to reach out to people. And if any of you or if you know of anyone else who is interested in in filling any of the roles in the society that you think you might enjoy or qualified for. One of them is a media person we've talked about. We have a Facebook page which I have badly neglected because it's just, you know. Yeah, there's only so many hours in the day and to try to keep up with that. But and also if somebody had any expertise with Instagram, I have an account, but I've never really used it. And that would just be mainly, I think, posting photos that we would also probably put on a Facebook page or things just to spark some interest. And there are various Facebook groups involved with the parks name. They've just sort of sprung up here and there. And occasionally I dip into them or see a notification from them, but I don't get too involved. But if that media person was so inclined and could sort of keep a closer eye on that and share news of the society to those pages. It might be a way to reach out and encourage some of those people to become Park Society members. Because it's amazing how many of those people are not. I recognize a few names once in a while, but a lot of them are not society members. One of the other areas we've talked about was creating assistant historians. Tad, of course, is the society historian who assigns the lineage keys for new members and does all of that sorting and does all the magic with the numbers and getting them into the given name index. And we realize that there is a room or a need for people who to help out that. And it would give them an opportunity to become familiar with the lineage key system and how those family group sheet numbers, you know, oh, one K Y two get assigned for each individual. Because as I mentioned at one point, I know when I do a lot of research on southern US parks lines, very often I'll start looking at this line and I look for it in our given name index and it's not there. And which is simply a function of the fact that no member has joined from that line. So that information is not never gotten submitted to the society. Because we don't have the staff and the resources to go out and and do all of this stuff sort of proactively. But this would be an opportunity for these assistant historians to do that. To take an area that they want to volunteer if it's a, say, an area like the South that they might have some interest in or just simply from a research standpoint anywhere. Take a look at P a line that is not in our database and do a bit of research on it. Build up some family group sheets, try to get it back to their the earliest known ancestor in that line. And then create that we can create a lineage key for it and get that information into our database. So that that's another area. Bruce Reeves is is coming on board as the new webmaster for the website. And we're we're trying to get that sort of in a little better shape. We've been talking for a long time about getting a members only password protected site. And so we're hoping to get that going in the beginning of the year. We've just recently added the PayPal option for paying dues and at some point, you know, if somebody wanted to take this on, there is a a need for somebody to handle sort of merchandising if we ever wanted to do that. Some years ago, I played around with, I think it was called Zazzle, Z A Z Z L E. There's a number of different companies that do that where they'll, you know, they'll personalize your logo or your name or whatever on T shirts and coffee mugs and bags and that sort of thing. And I did some coffee mugs. I did some good heavy canvas tote bags. Well, there Ted has one right there. And yeah, we had a little family tree logo and and T shirts and there's no reason, and he's got the bag. So and Gary's got the bag. But there's no reason why we couldn't continue to do that. It's just again, you know, so many hours in the day and but if somebody wanted to handle that, there is a way on our MailChimp mailing system to to create something called a landing page, which I think would be where you would go to to look at and purchase that merchandise. And the way it worked with Zazzle and probably some of the others, you can pretty much set the price. There's a base price of what it's going to cost. And if you want to add more on to make a little bit more, I think you get a certain percentage on that basic price, but then if you wanted put two or three more dollars on top of that, that goes right to the society to make it a little more lucrative. So that's that's something that if somebody had the expertise and wanted to handle that, it would be a great opportunity and it would bring in, I'm sure it wouldn't, we wouldn't be rolling in dough, but it it's it's a way to make a few bucks, but also it gets the society's name and logo out in public and you never know. I I had one of those bags with me in on a trip to the National Archives in DC years ago. And I was staying at a hotel on the outskirts of DC and then I was waiting for the hotel shuttle to take me to the train to go into town. And I'm standing there with a few other people and the guy looks down at the bag and says, hmm, Park Society, what's that? And I explained what it's like. I says, well, my mother was a parks. So needless to say, we sat on the train all the way into DC and and talked about that. So you never know, you never know when it's going to spark a conversation that will lead to something, something greater.
Something else we could consider too is Parks Crest or Tardans for a lot of groups.
Yeah, well, the crest thing, I mean, there are very different variations and I I they're fun. I don't put much stock into them myself, but you know, I know we've used them in the past and it's usually a variation on deer heads with antlers, sometimes three or something like that. But and again, on, you know, on merchandise, as long as we have the right to to use it, I'm not sure. We'd have to check all that out whether there's a copyright on any of that stuff. But so those are just some of the ideas and I'm sure people can think of other ways to lend a hand with the society. And that sort of leads to one of the other topics of discussion we had on there on on the trustee meeting is I broached the subject and we talked about it and it seems like the board is favorable, looked favorably on it and we're going to start exploring this for possibly next year. We want to have our ducks in a row, but we want to go international. You know, up until this time, membership in the society has been restricted to people who live in the United States and Canada. And certainly in 1968, when the society was founded or 63, I guess 63, up until even the eighties or or nineties, when there was no internet to speak of and international money exchanges were tricky. Now, a lot of that has gone the way of the dodo. I mean, we've got the internet, we've got electronic ways to transfer funds and so forth. So there there really isn't any reason to exclude parks descendants from different countries. And you know, we've been experiencing that in in the the DNA project because that's always been open to anybody. Park Society member or no, and any country or no. And while we don't have a great number of participants from outside the country, it's growing in in no small part to John Park, we were talking about earlier, who is recruiting a lot of people from Northern Ireland and Scotland. But some Canadians, I've got several people in our group eight who are from Ireland. There's one Canadian who goes back to an English origin. And you know, we know we can, we can find some of these people on the internet. And so there's a need for somebody to help out with that. And as they join the society again, the assistant historian role would come into play because lineage keys would need to be created for those. And Ted, you know, is not going to be able to handle all of that by himself. And if there were somebody who wanted to specialize in Ireland or Northern Ireland or Great Britain, then they would be a little more familiar, possibly with research, you know, sources and things and and help create, you know, the the family group sheets for a particular line. And along with that, of course, is DNA testing because the more overseas members we have and have their information in our databases and with their corresponding DNA. I think we're going to start to see a lot of cross referencing between those lines and American and Canadian lines that are already in our database and in our in our DNA project. And it's, you know, it's a way of sort of bridging the gap from both ends. Because obviously, you know, people over and say, you know, England, their lines didn't leave. And they may not be able to go back sometimes, maybe as far as lines in the US can go back. But with DNA and cross working, whatever other methods there are, we might be able to begin to narrow that gap between finding the connections. So I think it's very exciting. It it's going to be challenging, but it will also have the potential to grow our membership. Could be considerably if we can get the word out. I know there's certainly people in Australia and New Zealand who I could reach out to. I used a couple of families there as an example a few months ago in a talk and I haven't had the time to follow up on those people. But both of their lines go back to Staffordshire in the 17th and 18th centuries. And the DNA would tell us whether those two lines are connected, quite likely they are. But also whether they're connected to any of the lines that are here in the US. We know that the Lieutenant Richard Parks lined in the lineage key queue, which for a long time was thought to be associated with the Robert Park line, but it's not genetically. But they have a genetic connection with these two fellows named Pursehouse. We've talked about that before. One lives in Australia, one lives in New Zealand. And and those lines go back to Staffordshire quite early in the 1500s. So, you know, that's just an example of how possibly coming at it from several directions. You might really be able to add to the body of knowledge. And along those lines, we've been talking about trying to rework our bylaws and our mission statement, all of that in order to qualify for 501(c)(3) status. Right now, we're a 501(c)
C seven.
Seven, okay. And Ted is not terribly encouraged by the prospect, but I think it's worth giving it a shot. And we're going to start, you know, doing some committee work on that. I have been doing a little research and there's a lot of information on the web out there about migration studies using surnames. And so I think the approach we might take is to now that we're opening up the society to anyone all over the world is to initiate something that might be called something like the Parks International Migration Study or PIMS. I I thought of different acronyms. We get a Parks International surname study and that didn't seem to be a good idea. So or the Park Parks Migration Study, PMS, nah. So maybe the Parks International Migration Study. Oh, here comes Carrie, might be a possibility. But approaching it that way in that it's it would fall under the either the scientific or the educational aspect of a 501(c)(3). And of course, this Park Society has always been open to anyone regardless of whether you're a part descendant or not. We used to call them associate members. Is that correct? Yeah, and it's always been that way. So it's the group is not solely for the benefit of its members as part descendants. And now by sort of approaching it with this larger migration study, trying to add to the body of knowledge on how populations migrated by focusing on a particular surname. Because parks, I'm sure, are no different from the people who live next door and around them in England or in Ireland or in Scotland. They moved about the same times and the same ways and for the same reasons. And then, of course, we can continue that in within each country, especially here in in the United States. And that could tie into that long lamented state county project that I'd still love to see get going and and a number of you have volunteered to help with it when we can never get it together. But that would follow the surnames through the country over time. And it it certainly could be a lifetime or two worth of study, but it's it's something that, once it gets underway and and qualifies as the 501(c)(3) status, that allows us to not only do fundraisers on Facebook, which I used to do them for the Opera Company when I would was managing that. And you can raise a considerable amount of money that way, just people throwing in $10 or $15 at a time. But it would also give us the ability to apply for grants. And I think, you know, through that migration study, there's a possibility of getting some grant monies that would help lighten the load in terms of possibly even hiring some people to do some of the the grunt work. I'd like to see it all be volunteer, but there's no reason why if we had the money available, at least to pay for supplies or whatever. So I'm just spitballing and throwing stuff out and I'd love to hear thoughts from everybody on some of this. Does it sound like a direction that might be worth pursuing?
Certainly. Well, yes, the members of the board know that I've not exactly been leaving for joy. And it comes from my professional experience, these 40 years in tax practice. Um, you know, give it a try, but I'm not so sure it's possible. They're getting pretty snippy about how they issue the 501(c)(3), but it, you know, give it a try. I do have something nice or something to mention. PS number 56, Herbie Coke Park the third. He's the last one of that generation that is part of the society. Herbie Coke was one of the sons, grandsons of Herbie Coke Park the first, who was the founder of the Park Davis Pharmaceutical Company. And Herbie is, you know, he was, he was like, he's got his doctorate in chemistry and his job was strangely enough, was when they were developing a drug to come up with the trade name that was to be used. That was his job to figure out what would be a good trade name, you know, you know, you know, Deroxac or Xanax or whatever. You know, that was his job to find, figure those out.
I think nowadays with all of these drug commercials that we're bombarded with, the names they come up with, I I'm convinced it's just they take a bunch of Scrabble tiles and throw them out on a board. They make no sense. It's just a collection of, it's almost like that character in Superman, the little imp that you had to say his name backwards for him to disappear. It's like Mixallex or something. They just
No, the issue is, and I'm trying to remember what car company it was. They, the problem is, if you come up with a name and you know, if it's in, you know, in American, in the English alphabet type of thing, you got to make sure that you're not running into trouble with that word being used in other than the language that is not, you know, appropriate.
And I think
Chevy Nova.
Yes, somebody mentioned that just the other day. No go. Nova.
And and that's one of the to do is to take a name and, you know, and test it with, you know, all the different languages to figure out, is there something, is there a slang or something here that we have a problem with? Well, nevertheless, Herbie Coke has got some portraits that has come to him from a branch of the family. And the question is, is he has no children? And he has the, what is he going to do with those portraits? And so he was, you know, his letter to me was, what, what is my suggestions? And I'm going to cover that in my next historian's corner. Because there is nobody that's particularly interested in the family in that portrait, you know. And then you go and see, is there any relative, any other relatives or descendants from that line that might be interested? And if that doesn't work out, okay, then you need to look to see, is there any particular institution or area or something that this person had some influence in? And maybe they would like these pictures to, you know, put into someplace that they can deceive. And which, but all of us sort of have that issue, especially if we're not married and we don't have any children or that. You know, who do these heirlooms go to, you know, and now you'd rather not have them sold at auction or taken to, you know, the goodwill or something. But you know, that's, that's the issue is, you know, a lot of us have, I have an oval table in my living room that I have this, that we now know it was it was part of the Paige estate and it goes back to 1840. And it's black, it's called the Black Walnut. And, you know, there's nobody in the family that really is interested in that, you know. And I I hate to see that, you know, you just kind of wander away somewhere. So but that's a, that's a point that I want to, you know, cover in the next newsletter. I also did found a piece that Judy Russell, who is a professional genealogist, more or less. She's also an attorney and she had a piece in a column of, oh, about a year ago. It was said, it would be sigh, it would be nice. And, you know, and she pointed out, it'd be nice if their birth date was the same every place you found it. If the death date was the same every place you found it. If where they died or were born was the same every place you find it. Oh, sigh, that doesn't happen. And that's, you know, that's the issue of doing genealogy is because, you know, I I tell people, for every date you have, there's at least one, if not more, variations on that date. And, you know, you have to sort of try to figure out, okay, which one do you want to use? And then you probably ought to explain why you use that particular date or place and so forth. It's like when somebody puts Sharon, Connecticut. Okay, there's a Sharon County, there's a Sharon Township, and there's a Sharon Village. Which one of these is the is the Sharon they're referring to, you know, kind of thing? And that's, you know, it's frustrating. So that's another thing I'm going to cover in this. I do have a person who's talking to me about becoming an assistant historian, number five, 1571, Brian Dean Park. And I'm, I've been, you know, sending some stuff to him and we're going to have a Zoom meeting one of these days. We just talk about things. He already went out there and saw that video that's out there on the YouTube that shows the head office here in Milwaukee. We found that interesting and so I've got one person that's going to be working on that area. So that'd be good, you know, so that's, that's the updates from here. Okay.
That's a good start, but as I said, if any of you are interested in in doing that, and I I think it's, as we said, we can narrow the focus so that nobody's committed to doing more than than they think they have the capacity or the time to handle. It's just pull out, you know, one particular family that you've noticed or once you've gotten access to the given name that you know is not in our records and then start building out that family tree. And in many cases, when I do that, I end up, of course, tracking it down to present time and trying to find a descendant for DNA testing. Which is the reason I'm doing most of that, you know, I always have an ulterior motive. But and if you can get them to join the society, then of course, when they fill out their application papers, then that forces Tad to create a lineage key for them. But without that urgency, you know, it's just, there just isn't enough time to fill out, you know, all of these sort of missing families. And it's amazing, I don't know if you run into it, but I do, having access to the to the given name index, how often I do find a line that is not in there. Or at least just a branch of a family that is missing from a from a lineage key. So there is, there is a need there. Anything else? Anybody got any thoughts about this or anything else? Very quiet group today. Hey, how about those Giants or whoever's playing? I was gonna say, how about those Yankees, but I know it's the wrong season.
I got, I got nothing for you there.
Yeah.
You, you guys, and I know nothing about this at all, so I'm going to ask a question. You mentioned a 503(c) and then you mentioned international parks groups. Does one connect to the other? Do you have to have one before the other or are they totally two different things?
No, I I think the 501(c)(3) is simply for tax purposes here in the US.
Okay.
What the theory is, the section's 501 in the internal revenue code talks about organizations that can function without having to pay income taxes on seats and that. And, you know, so if you form a, for say, St. Swepton's afternoon, Sunday afternoon tea club and you form a social club and you file and you get this exemption, that means that you don't have to pay income taxes on the revenues that the organization gets. But the other side of the coin is unless you're a special type of 501 organization, you can't make contributions that would be tax deductible to the person who's making them. And that's, see, we're a 501(c)(7), which is a social club. And so we don't have to, we don't have to pay any income taxes, federal or state or local, where they have them on the revenues that the organization has. We don't have to file any We don't have to file any kind of returns in terms of profit and loss net. But if someone gives us, uh, you know, a hundred dollars, they can't turn around and put that on their tax return on their schedule A. You know, it's a charitable contribution. So that's what, you know, the five oh one C three does. It makes contributions to the organization. To be taxable on your schedule A on your Form ten forty for the, the appropriate state reform. Now, if people give money and they happen to, um, list that on in their schedule A. Under charitable contributions, that between them, dot in the IRS, you know? Um, I, you know, we, we do not, you know, if, if you give money to an organization, you want to be able to deduct it. You need to make sure that deduct that organization, which are five oh ones, C three. And if they are, they should be telling you that in the contribution form somewhere, okay? But I'm sure, one of my jobs, one of the things I used to do is when I was doing taxes professionally. And somebody would come in with a list of organizations that they wanted to, you know, list as tax deductions. Uh, I would actually go, if, most of them I was familiar with, but occasionally I'd have to go out and check publication seventy-eight. Which lists those organizations. And, and you know, and say, oh, you can't use that, you know, that, but that was my due diligence because I signed the returns to prepare. So I'm not gonna get hung out the drive, you know, I wanna make sure that those are things. Um, but that's, that's the whole thing with C three, that, that's a United States thing, you know? And that's, we tell people, if you're gonna form a club and get money in and so forth, you really do need to form it formally. Uh, we could, let's say, let's say you have a club for some, with, uh, one of the biggest problems is like these people who decided to start a investor club. And so one guy will open up a checking account and savings account and, you know, and, and they. Work it as a little fellowship. Well, the problem is, is something happens to that person. The money that's in those bad account. Is, is his money and it's going to be handled according to his estate. So you need to set up separate business. You need to set up, you know, an organization and get that proper. Uh, you know, clarification, what, what you are as an organization, so. But we, I, I've taken this beyond a good question, I think, but that's, that's.
Well, unfortunately, and you can verify this for me, Ted, but a few years ago, the, the government, uh, didn't do five oh and C threes any great favors. Uh, by, you know, making that standard deduction, uh, amount. Such that most people would just claim that rather than itemizing deductions, because unless you're making. A great number of charitable deductions. Uh, uh, that would be above that limit, then what's the point of, of going through all of that? So if, if you're donating. Twenty-five dollars here and fifty dollars there and thirty dollars there over the course of a year. It, you know, it may be tax deductible, but you're better off just taking the standard deduction.
Well, the standard is. Well, itemized deductions are a number of things, you know, medical. Interest on your house payments, you know, and charitable contributions, and there are other things, you know, and. For example, your, your state income tax payments are part of your itemized deductions. So if you have a lot of medical deductions or you're in a high tax state like New York state. Um, you know, or you have, you know, big, a lot of interest you've been paying, you're paying on your mortgages. Uh, well, then, you know, then you can count your charitable deduction, you know, because it's, it's the total of all those deductible expenses. You know, medical, you know, and, and as you get older. You know, your medical expenses go up if you got long-term care insurance. Boom, that's in there. If you pay for your health insurance, that's a deductible. So, you know, it depends. It, it did cut back a number of people who were itemizing because it is quite large now. But it, it's that big picture. You know, what do you have in medical? What do you have in interest? What do you have in taxes? What do you have in charitable? All those put together. But yes, it did, it cut back, uh, I would say it probably at least twenty-five to thirty percent. Uh, of the people who used to itemize, but they don't anymore. So because of that, yeah.
Well, I, I think for the society, if we were able to get the five oh one C three status. Uh, the advantage would be, of course, any, any donations, uh, would be tax deductible. But, uh, I mentioned fundraising ability, uh, uh. Only a five oh one C three can do a fundraiser on Facebook, for instance. Uh, you have to, there's, there's a, a site called Guide Star, uh, that five oh one C threes register themselves on. And it's searchable to the public. So if you have any questions about whether an organization is legit. It's five oh one C three, you can look them up on there and you can see. Uh, their tax returns for several years, who's on the board, how they're set up, what their mission statement is, all of that stuff. So it's a way of saying, this isn't some fly-by-night George Santos, you know, kind of operation. Uh, uh, but also I think for us, uh, one of the game changers would be the ability to, uh, apply for grants. Um, I don't know how active they are charitably anymore, the Park Davis Foundation or the. Uh, they used to, I used to see them listed as sponsors on a lot of PBS programming. Uh, but I don't know whether they're as active as they used to be. But certainly having that connection, I think there's, uh, we might be able to write up a grant proposal. Uh, and have a, maybe a little bit of a foot in the door because of, uh, the connection with, as you say, with, uh, Herbie Cook Park and that family. Uh, just things like that. It just, uh, it could make a difference in our financial status going forward. So.
Some of the. Specifically, Park Davis have merged with other companies and no longer are their own foundation.
Yeah. Yeah. Some of those people might, they might still be on the board, who knows?
Yeah.
Uh, but they don't, they don't own or run the company probably anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
In the past, we have had members from overseas. But it's always been problematic because, you know, we had a woman in, uh, England. Uh, but the problem was she did not have, you know, any good access to being able to pay us in American dollars. And when she sent us a check in pound sterling, by the time we got done with the banking fees to do the exchange. Uh, because the bank we have is, um, more reach, a smaller bank, a more local bank, and so they'd have to go through, uh, interbank exchange. Uh, by the time they got done with the fees, we ended up paying to, to get that change, you know, and when you had dues. You know, like twenty-five dollars, that was when she was in, you know, it didn't pay. So we just, you know, and plus, sending a newsletter. Like surface mail was not exactly cheap.
Well, uh, again, you know, that was then, this is now, there, there are ways around that. And, and also in terms of the newsletter. You know, just mailing a hard copy newsletter overseas would be prohibitively expensive. And we are moving on that front anyway to go more to the electronic newsletter. So.
We had, we had a guy, Valway, who's a member. Uh, but he also had, uh, banking in England and that banking had corresponded banking in the United States. So he could actually pay us the US dollars through his English bank. You know, but that was, that became problematic when you had people overseas, you know, really did so. You know, but new, using PayPal and other things that do change, using exchange. You know, that would probably make that, you know, not a problem anymore.
Yep, that's the plan.
Um, Ken, you had also mentioned the, uh, the census project that. We've been trying to get off the ground for a few years now and, um. I, I hope I'm, I'm not insulting you, but I, I think maybe you, you have so much on the stove. I mean, you have so much to do. I, I think that you're gonna have to pick somebody that, I think you had a list of names of.
Yeah.
People that volunteered to do different states and whatnot.
We did, we did. And, and Ann Wells, uh, uh, offered to sort of help. Coordinate that. She's had some experience with extracting records. The, the big hangup for getting started was always the website because we couldn't figure out how. To get that information into a form that could be put on the website and would be searchable and, and all of that stuff. And it just got bogged down. And at a certain point, I just kind of threw up my hands and, and walked away because like you say, there's, there's always something else to spend your time and energy on. Uh, but I, I still think it's a good idea. Uh, if Susan were here, uh, the Blair. Uh, organization that she is involved with too, family organization, has been doing that sort of thing. Uh, and, and I believe they also started with the eighteen fifty census, which was, you know, our reasoning was that was. A good starting point because it, you know, it was the first census that enumerated everyone and gave, gave places of birth and ages. And you could look forward more easily to sixteen, seventy and eighty. By following the, once those families had been identified. And you could also use it to some extent, certainly with the heads of family, of looking back at those eighteen forty, thirty earlier censuses. So. Um, I, I still think it's a good idea, but yeah, it's again, it's, uh, it's staffing manpower hours. Uh, and also that technical issue of, of getting it onto the website.
You, Bruce, I'm going now. Do you think it's, uh, we have a better chance of getting it on the website?
I do. If he, if he has time. He just announced that this. Meeting on Sunday, though, that he's got some project that's gonna keep him pretty busy through January, uh, but.
Uh, maybe, maybe we should just start collecting the data anyway and. You know, it's gonna take a while and.
We, we certainly could, but I, I, I'd like to at least know ahead of time what form. Is best to put that data in so that it doesn't have to be reworked again to get it onto the website. That's. And, and again, that's, that's an issue that I'm not that conversant in. Uh, I thought.
Maybe we just, you know, pick somebody from that list that's willing and let them have at it and see how they do.
Well, we'll, we'll keep tossing it around and, and see what we can come up with. About a year ago, when I was on vacation, I, I thought we had figured out a way of using, uh, Google Sheets. And putting it on our Google Drive and embedding that into a page on the website. And then it got bogged down with Paul because it needed some plugins, both on. At the Google end and on the WordPress end to make that happen. And then again, it just fizzled out. But I, I think it's definitely technically doable. Uh, and if we, if I just knew that it, that could happen. Then yeah, I, I, I know there's a, a short list of people who would be willing to, to get going on things right away. I just didn't want to have it extracted, put in some sort of form, uh, and then sit there and then. Have to be redone to get it onto the website. That's, I just didn't want to make extra work for all of us. So.
Whether the, uh, Family Search nineteen fifty census that was crowdsourced. How they did it, uh, that seems to be the. Model, I guess, for. Multiple users.
Yeah.
All doing the same thing.
Yeah.
But you have to have the capability of imaging and then. Taking that image.
Yeah.
Into a proof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the initial phase of it really is just for people to take a, a county or a state. Uh, an area that sometimes maybe that they're familiar with and just, it's just an extraction process and just. Us deciding, we don't need every piece of information that's on the eighteen fifty census, just the vital, uh, information. And so narrow that, simplify that down. And then, once it's extracted, somebody. Else who has access to the lineage keys and all that could identify those people so that. The people who are just sort of the worker bees extracting this stuff don't have to get bogged down in trying to figure out who these people are. Uh, but, uh.
More.
Yep, yep. So.
You know, there's.
There's a kitty. They what?
You know, there's another good source out there that of course would take a lot of time is the, uh. The county historical books from the late eighteen hundreds. You know, the history of Clinton County, Warren County, you know.
Yeah.
Goes across a, a lot of the states in the U S. Uh, I've gone into a lot of those and have looked for parks and have found them in a lot of different counties. You know, specifically looking for my particular line, but. I've run across a lot of them and, you know, some of them I've been able to identify in the, the database, Park Society database and. You know, that'd be, I think that would be very wonderful to. Extract a list of, of those for different counties and states.
Uh, I, I have a number of those in my files, uh, that I've downloaded. Uh, and, and I think Wilma some time ago took the list of our library contents. And, uh, went out and looked to see how many of those are available through Google Books or Family Search or. Uh, what are some of the library sites? Uh, a lot of those are available online in electronic form and again, uh. What we talked about with the website is putting the library listing on the public facing page. But if we have a, a link to the book itself, maybe making that only available to members, I don't know. Or maybe not, but, uh, just, uh, it would be a way of enticing people to. Oh, here's what they have, but I can't access it fully unless I'm a member. Uh, and that's, I, I had sent around to the trustees. Uh, David Vance, who was one of the speakers at, at Houston's conference. Very, very good speaker, knows his stuff, especially about surname projects. Uh, but I went and checked out his Vance Sir, uh, DNA project. And also they have a Vance Family Association. It's a similar kind of, uh, symbiotic relationship like the Park Society and the Parks Project. Uh, and that's what they do on their site. There is a members only, uh. Component to it. And so you might see what's in the archives, but you can't access it. Unless you're a member, that sort of thing. So what you want to do is put enough information on the public site to let them know what you've got. Uh, but, you know, if you, if you want to, want to see more, then, you know, fill out the application.
Yeah, you don't. You just send a newsletter to, uh, two hundred and fifty different libraries and history, uh, societies. Uh, until we discovered that a couple of the members had discovered that, oh, my library gets the newsletter, so why should I be a member? And, uh, that, that sort of snapped my nose a little bit because it's like, oh, okay, thank you. You know, we're trying to be nice, but you know. Somebody has to, you know, pay in order that we can put this thing out, you know, so we, you know, you have to. Make sure you have a way to find.
Yeah. Another thing, another thing the Vance, uh, site does, and Gary, uh, if you don't know, has been working on this for quite a while. Is, uh, putting the indexes to all of the newsletters into a, a digital form that can be. Put on the website and searched and that sort of thing. And, uh. On the Vance site, they have, uh, articles and it gives you the page and the issue number. But of course you can't access it, uh, unless you're a member, but the public can search it. They can see, oh, there's something on. Uh, you know, Ray County, Tennessee, oh, that's where I'm from. There's an article in there about it. If I really want to see it. Then you become a member, uh. So.
I, I, uh, I finished volumes one through twenty-five and, uh. I know Patrick has asked to, to give me a hand and I'd be willing to have his help and. I just don't know if I have a mandate to go forward or not.
Oh, I think, I think it's definitely worth doing and that feeds into what we want to do with the website.
Now, Gary, I found some, uh, uh, more hard copy things of, uh, after the twenty-five. Uh, I'm gonna scan that and send that to you. Uh, I was, I've been doing some digging through a couple of the piles that have been sitting over on the corner of the desk. So, uh, I found some more materials there that already had, you know, been in, indexed manually on paper. Uh, so that you don't have to go through and re-index the, uh, the newsletter. I also have, but I'm not, I have to see, you know, what ones I have. Um, there's, uh, Dean Churchill, uh, and her husband, Norm, were helping with that. And they had. And they had, you know, gone through and taken newsletters apart and, you know, to, you know, to create that morgue of the newsletter. And I would have to see if I have anything, I think we have up to thirty seven this time that's been actually put on paper. But I'll have to see what else I have, and I'd be glad to send all that to you. So, you know, just give me a chance to do some digging through here, right?
Yeah, for, for those who, for those of, who may not be familiar, but there are several bound copies of newsletter issues, one through twenty five, and then twenty six through thirty seven or so. And they, I don't know how many sets you made, probably a half a dozen.
Three sets made.
Yeah. But, but at the back of all of those, there are very complete indexes as to what's in those that set of issues, broken down by state and county and area. There are name indexes, place indexes, all kinds of things, it made it very easy to find something, you know, in a past issue that might be relevant to what you're looking at. And that's what we're hoping to do electronically.
Do you have?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think I've got a couple of, of extra volumes of some of them that just ended up with the library.
Because I knew there were three sets, and there was one that was in the library. Colonel Sark one, number one forty had a set, and I thought we had sent a set out to Paul, the editor, but I don't think he has it anymore. So, you know, but there were a total of three sets of them, so, but.
Well, it, it's just that, that thing is that there's so much information sitting there, and we need to find a way to get it and make it available to the members. The, the past issues, a lot of them are online now, but, you know, you'd have to go and and read through or look, at least look at the table of contents for each one. But the indexes are so much more granular that you can really hone in on a particular family or a particular, you know, county or area. So, you know, that's, it's just a way of getting some of the information that's sitting in your office or in my closet or whatever out so that the members can access it for themselves.
Getting back to the newsletters, like I said, I already finished one through twenty five into a spreadsheet, so that's, you can access that, that's completely finished. And I already have the in-depth paper indexes for twenty six through thirty three, and I can start on that. I just don't know if you like what I did with one through twenty five, and I was just waiting to get the approval to go on to twenty six or thirty three.
Well, I, I don't know that I'm the person to say it, but yeah, I'm very much in favor of it.
Gary, did you send me the, your spreadsheets on those?
I did, yes, a few weeks ago, yeah.
I'll dig them out and see, but yes, let's move forward, okay?
Okay. Well, I, I might give, yeah, I might give the, that index twenty six to thirty three for Patrick to input and.
Do you guys know, you guys know how to reach each other?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay.
We've been talking.
Okay, well, sound, that sounds good, that sounds good, so. Dan.
Similar thing be done with the library? The Parks Library and indexing of all of?
Well, they're, they're generally categorized by, a, a lot of them pertain to a specific lineage key. Some of them are a little more general, some of those early ones might have had several lines in it from like the South. I forget what her name is now, but she did a number of them, but that's sort of enumerated in the description of what's in, in those volumes.
Okay, so that's already been done?
Yeah, yeah.
Never, all right. It's just not easy to access it through the website to determine what is there.
Well, actually, that, that library page disappeared for a while, I got in touch with Bruce, he did something when he changed the PayPal and some other things, and all of a sudden, the, the tab for the library just disappeared. And I think it was just inadvertent on his part, so he, he texted me today and said, should it be back? Should it be on its own tab? And I said, yes, yes. Website, but you just can't see them from the public view, yeah. Is that Kitty asleep? Oh, you're muted, but don't disturb her.
No, but if I don't, she'd stay up there for two hours. All over the keyboard and you never know.
Anybody else, anything? Any ideas, any thoughts, any, yeah? Well, going once, going twice, should we wrap this up then for the day?
I'll say some of the things you had talked about earlier, I mean, I wouldn't mind helping, but I need this has been a rough year for us, so we need to, I need to get things settled down, and hopefully, maybe I can reach out and offer a hand
Yeah.
into next year.
Well, I, I think what we'll be looking at going forward with some of these volunteer things is not to put a heavy burden on people. Just take on what you have the time to take on, and there's no great burden or expectation, not gonna be hard deadlines or anything like that, so. Anybody who's willing to engage at any level, that's, that's fine, you know, it's not like we all have other jobs and lives and things to do, and, and we all understand, you know, you can only devote so much time to this stuff, but yeah, any, any level would be, would be welcome, so. Well. Good, good holidays to everyone, we'll see you in January. If we all make it through the, the new year. And thanks for joining us, and we'll see you next time, okay?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Take care. Bye-bye.